We want them to come and participate and be involved, help direct them. We recently had an experience at one of our seniors' centers where the seniors themselves were participating in an exercise class. And they said, "We want more." We don't want the class-- well, the class was a 20-week class, and after the 20 weeks, they said, "We're not leaving." "We want more, we love it, this is making a difference in our lives, we feel healthier, we love each other in terms of the social context that we're making." And they say, "You figure it out because we're not going anywhere." And I can tell you, that seniors' center director was on their toes, providing more programming for them, and delighted to understand how much of an impact the class had had. So we really want seniors to be very involved with us.
And you mentioned something about best practices. We do have best practices. And we have programs in this city and county that are working.
Yes.
And if you look at our population as a region, Los Angeles County, our population of seniors outnumbers the population of most nations. And working together on a regional approach, bringing those best practices together, we have an awful lot to share, not only with our local seniors, but with the world. And that's really what we're looking at. We're looking at being able to interface with our seniors, bring them on board, and to make sure that they get the services that they need, knowing that the baby boomer population is on its way there.
Oh, yes, they've started already.
And they've started already, and we have to make sure that what we provide is meeting the needs.
Well, I think there is something positive about making this a leadership challenge of saying, "This is time for you to take the reins, not only of your destiny, but your children, and your children's children. Let's make this a city, a model of services and concern." And I think, most of all, that we're sincere about this. Do you remember, Laura, when we talked about people in homes where what they cared most about was somebody actually cared about them?
Correct. And, you know, one of the things that we found through the survey, we really reached out to communities, to local neighborhood levels, to ensure that we had representation on this survey that was really reflective of the population of the county of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, at the councilmatic district, at the neighborhood level, at the board of supervisors' district level. And seniors came out and helped us out by filling these out. Now we will put it also back into the community and say, "The results are here, help us make a difference in improving the systems that serve all of us." Because it's really about all of our quality of life, not just seniors.
And we know that, living in Los Angeles County, it's a multi-ethnic, multicultural environment.
Yes, indeed.
And as part of our survey--
But we got the best food.
Well, we do. We do. And as part of that, one of the things we were able to do is to have the survey in a number of languages.
Yes.
Which allows us to be able to drill down and find out if there are particular needs in particular ethnic areas that we can address that are maybe not prevalent in another area. So we are really, really pleased with that aspect of our report as well.
I noticed one of the distinct features in one of the supervisory districts was difficulty with taking medications. And I said to myself, "That has to be language. That has to be-- the instructions are being given but not comprehended." Because it really did stand out for me, generally the downtown area. And I'm thinking, you know, one or two high school students who are in a pre-med program making home visits would really make a difference in a statistic like that. Now, how inclusive do you envision some of these programs? Could we actually build a community for seniors? You know, sort of a planned place where seniors can congregate and find their medical care and their housing needs met?
You know, actually, rather than a planned community, one of the things that's naturally occurring are called naturally occurring retirement communities.
The NORC.
The NORC, that term for. It's one of those lingos that we use in aging. But that's occurring now. We have communities where older people are already aging in place. Part of the survey is to also help Cynthia and I begin to more strategically plan, at the neighborhood level, how our agencies can be more effective in outreach and delivering care. But Los Angeles, as you said, is usually one of the forefronts in the nation in testing different models. We actually have two NORCs that are operating a model of developmental services right now. We are all looking at their findings because we want to find out how will we utilize it in the future to plan to our local community levels. But that's already happening in Los Angeles. That's something for the future, that is now, in terms of large concentrations of 75-plus or 85-plus year olds living in close proximity to one another, which really is going to challenge both of us to plan differently in terms of how we'll do delivery of care and how will we organize our services around those communities.
Right. And so this is so important, and I know from seniors in my family and from what I've read, they want to age in place.
Yes.
This-- don't uproot me, don't take me away from my photographs and all the rest. So how will we go about alleviating the concerns of our seniors? What's next? What should we do with all this information, Cynthia?
Well, one of the things that you can do is look at it and determine how it applies to you as an individual, how it applies to your parents, how it applies to your close relatives, and find out if they actually have those needs that have been identified in the report. If they do, try to find resources for them. In addition to that, what we are doing is we're looking at those key findings, and we are identifying resources to assist those needs that have been identified. In addition to that, we're working with the area agency councils and the Commission on Aging to do some advocacy work as well.
Great. Well, we all need to be advocates. Again, we are talking about the survey of the older adult population. We thank you both so much, Cynthia and Laura. This has been a wonderful development. The award is well-deserved. This is really a great document, and I look forward to relying on it in the future. I'm Paul Peterson with the Department of Aging and Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for joining us today. And Laura, we're going to give you your office back.
Oh, yeah. You're always welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you to council members Cardenas and Han, Kretz, Kocorian, Parks, Reyes, Rosenau, and Time. We're waiting one more member to begin our meeting. It's great to be back here in Van Nuys Council Chambers. We are not expecting Mr. Alakorn, Ms. Perry, or Ms. Smith. So we're waiting Mr. Wesson and Mr. Weeza. As soon as one of them is here, we will begin. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first day of October, Friday, October 1st, 2010. We're here in the Van Nuys City Hall chambers. We are back here, and it's great to be back in Van Nuys and in San Fernando Valley. We are going to be meeting here every other month on Fridays. Thank you to Mr. Zine for joining me on a motion to do that. And I've got to say, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Zine look like they're separated at birth today. But thank you to members of the public who have joined us, and those who are viewing us on Channel 35. We're available on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system, live, and also rebroadcast each evening on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. For your convenience, we're also available through two or three other ways, through the internet at la-city.org, which is our city's homepage. You can catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. For your convenience, we also archive all of our past council meetings online and audio of the past council meetings as well. You can also use your telephone and call in at (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. Here in the San Fernando Valley, you can call (818) 904-9450. On the west side, (310) 471-CITY. And in San Pedro, (310) 547-CITY. And listen in to the council meetings, as well as our committee meetings. Our agendas are made available through our city clerk's office and our city buildings, and also online at la-city.org. We have those available here today, and there are cards for members of the public to fill out if they'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us today. All items are open for public hearing in either committee or in council. If they've already had a public hearing in committee, it requires a council member to reopen that in the full council, or else it will just be council debate. And we also have a section for general public comment, which is two minutes per speaker. And while we are here in Van Nuys today, as is the case when we're downtown, the two chambers that we are not in, either San Pedro or downtown today, we can hear your testimony live if you are in those chambers. We do have 10 members now with Mr. Wesson's arrival, and with that, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll, we'll begin the meeting.
Alakorn, Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Kretz, Kocorian, LeBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenau, Smith, Wesson, Zane, Garcia, 10 members present, and a quorum president.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Han seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Parks will move that, and Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. That will be approved as well. Let's run through the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 8 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a request to continue item 1 to Tuesday, October 5th.
Okay. Is there any objection to considering these items, colleagues? If not, we will first look at those items. Number 1, if nobody has an objection, we'll go ahead and continue that till the 5th of this month.
And Mr. President, on item 5, the historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council submitted a community impact statement strongly opposing any continuation of the terms of an exclusive rights to negotiate with the developer.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not?
There are cards in that section.
Okay. Sorry, which other cards do we have?
You have cards on 2, 3, and 5, and Mr. Rosenau wanted to call 3 special, and I believe there's a substitute motion in the works.
Okay. And Ms. Han?
Special.
6 for Ms. Han. Any other specials, colleagues? We'll go ahead and close the public hearings on the other ones. And let's take up the balance then. That's items 4, 7, and 8. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. And the other items are for the special meetings, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Including 11 and 12?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We haven't called the special meeting yet, but when we do, we'll get there, and we'll make sure that's called special for you, Mr. Cardenas. Let's go now to general public comment then. Our first speaker is Richard Shav. After that, we'll go to downtown, where we have three speakers. Did I pronounce that right?
Shave.
Shave.
Don't worry about it.
All right. Richard Shave. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. I'm here to quickly give comment on the conundrum facing the downtown Los Angeles art walk. It was on the front page of the Los Angeles Times Wednesday, very quickly. Art walk has occurred mostly in Jan Perry's district for six years. In that time, it has undergone some amazing transformations, of which Jan is well aware. The biggest challenge facing the downtown art walk is that it spans two kingdoms. One kingdom is the world of the historic core business improvement districts lament. It just costs too much for these people to come down here, and who is going to pay for it? The resources of this kingdom are finite. Every dollar allocated to art walk is one less dollar for another need. This kingdom's and its needs must be addressed, but the art walk sits in another kingdom as well, and that is the infinite, a place concerned with the higher self, notions of right and wrong, culture, a prevailing sense of positive social change. Strangely, the art walk and the library crisis both straddle these kingdoms, so perhaps it is not surprising that Jan has chosen to look away from fostering both of them. It is very challenging to address something that is so far from politics as usual, but doing so is the mark of a great civic leader, and I believe Jan is capable of it. What the constituents of the art walk need is not necessarily a statement from Jan saying the city is going to wait and see what the art walk board proposes. What they need is someone in her position who can address their concerns about this second kingdom, who is going to foster this intangible part of the art walk which makes it so special, who is going to make the art walk board and the competing businesses and interests of the area call upon their higher selves for the good of the community and lift this debate out of the muck of greed and prejudice and find some solutions. The solutions exist, and finding one for this second kingdom, the infinite, will bring a fiscal solution, the finite. The paths to success exist without a fiscal handout from the city. I call on Jan to organize an overseer series of managed community meetings in which the art walk nonprofit board and its stakeholders can come together to address the very real challenges facing the event and the real solutions that they must be directed to take to correct the course of this nonprofit and the cultural and business entities that rely on its success. Jan, you have no reason to feel despondent. The hearts and minds of the community are waiting for you to make an intelligent and empathic statement on the topic of this dear event. They are waiting for you to take the initiative. Art walk can be saved.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We appreciate your comments very much, and thank you for coming out to Van Nuys. We'll go next to downtown. Dr. Clyde Williams will be our next speaker. After that is Mr. Arnold Sachs. Good morning, Dr. Williams.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sreno, Northeast LA. Last night, we had the last of the IRP, power, DWP presentations and workshops. What a mess. They don't know really what a strategic plan is. They don't have a strategic plan, so how can you have an integrated resources plan? Well, it's difficult. How about for water? That would be nice. We'd have another water plan. But the city also participates in this because you charge for the sewage and your solid waste through the DWP bill. And in fact, my DWP portion of the bill is lower than the city's portion. So what's going to happen? During the next 20 years, or 10 years, Propo and Stormwater will be added to the bill, and that will be $500 per lot per year on the tax roll. Propo, right now, has approved and implemented $140 million worth of new capital projects for Stormwater. Using the DPW's own estimates, that's almost $12 million a year-- Using the DPW's own estimates, that's almost $12 million a year that they need to find in order to operate and maintain these. So where is that money going to come from? Oh, it's going to come from us. We have to pay for it, no matter what. So I'd highly recommend that the city instruct the Department of Water and Power and the Public Works Department to get their acts together and form one program, one strategic plan, for the year 2035, just like the SCAGs does. So please have integration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Olga Hall. Good morning, Mr. Sacks, also in downtown chambers.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I wanted to congratulate the City Council for Wednesday's meeting. You got done with your business in 55 minutes, which is great news, with a little bit of irony because you waited 20 minutes to start the meeting. So almost half the time that you were in council chambers was spent waiting for a quorum. And then you might have read today's newspaper that the mayor wants the fire department to reallocate some of its official personnel into fire stations to alleviate the shortages, which comes about because of a budget crisis. So how much money is spent running the city council that could be used to maybe alleviate a pinch of this budget crisis? Yesterday's newspaper also, red light camera tickets go unpaid. Whole story about red light cameras and the audit that was done. But didn't you have the contract for the red light cameras up already, like three or four months ago? Wasn't that one of the first stumbling blocks with your Arizona boycott? Why wasn't this information? I mean, this is a new audit. Is there an audit that was done prior to that contract being reviewed? Why wasn't information available then, before the contract was signed, that comes out after the horse has left the barn and raced over the hill? More stunning work by city management. Who, we always hear, hire the best and brightest, because we need the best and brightest to maintain this level of incompetence. Thank you for your time, answers, and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, for your time. Olga Hall is our next speaker. After that will be Walter Bechtel.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. The Southwest Museum is closed. It is closed, not just the galleries, now is completely closed. This was Autry's goal from the very beginning. It has taken seven years of drama, two stories, backroom deals, and deception, but they have finally done it, closed it. Autry never had intention of honoring the merger with the Southwest Museum. They came as the serviers of the Southwest Museum. Jackie Autry needed the Southwest Museum collection to gain prestige, resources, and acceptance in museum world. She does not want two museums. She only wants one, the one that has her name, Autry. The Southwest Museum, the first museum in Los Angeles with a 100-year history, purging a magnificent setting, has fallen in the hands of Jackie Autry. She has no connection to it, so its destruction is meaningless to her. An empty museum is not a museum. That's what's left of it in our community. If you really care for the precious history of the Southwest Museum, it is your responsibility to stand up and fight for it. You can do it. You have the means to do it. This is the legacy that you can leave to the city of Los Angeles, protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker.
Okay. Good morning. I wanted to say something in response to somebody that came here a day or two ago, Mr. Pat Boone. He wanted to say something about being patriotic. Now, I think people need to remember that Mr. Pat Boone is one of the first, if not first, rock and roll artists in our country. He was right there when Alan Freed got prosecuted for stealing the name "Moon Dog" music from Moon Dog Harden, a blind person who really couldn't defend himself. And he lost the case, Mr. Alan Freed. In fact, he got kicked out of the state of New York. And there's a lot of riffraff involved with music, and one of the main reasons why Cuba is a country and separate from the rest of us is because of the way the mafia and the music people did to the people of Cuba. And I think if Mr. Pat Boone is as patriotic as he claims that he is, I hope that he will be cooperative and would be, without having to be prompted to do so, surrender information that he knows, in particular, about the manner and the ways and dealings of the music people leading up into prosecutions of these people and their violations for everything from the BMI consent decree all the way through to not just blatant murders and things that we know are so rampant in that industry and my industry, and especially in regard to eavesdropping. If he is angry that some people don't want to salute the flag, I think he needs to be mindful and cognizant of the fact that that's one of the main reasons America says something out of one side of their mouth, and they do something out of the side of their other mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next speaker is Candido Maris, back here in Van Nuys Chambers. Nice to see you, Mr. Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I apologize that I didn't dress up for you today, but it's been a rough week. But thank you for coming back to Van Nuys, the heart of the San Fernando Valley, and we appreciate this visit. Mr. Wesson, are you here today? Ah, Mr. Wesson. I just wanted to thank you for something you said last week. You said, "It doesn't matter how many times you get knocked down, it's how many times you get up." And believe me, that means a lot to a lot of us. So I was having a rough day that day, and I was actually sleeping back here. And when you said that, I got up and I said, "It's time to move forward." So thank you. And it's something that we can apply to our community throughout the city. So again, thank you very much, and we appreciate it. But again, thank you, folks, for being back in the San Fernando Valley. We appreciate it.
Great to be back. Thank you. I'll close our general public comment. Let's go to items called special for cards and by council members.
First item, Item 2 was called special for cards.
Okay. Dr. Williams in City Hall is our first speaker on Item number 2.
Hello? Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sreno, Northeast LA. High-speed rail. Sierra Club Transportation Committee is very strongly in favor of rail. However, is this really a high-speed rail? Four miles of double tracking in the San Fernando Valley on grade. I don't believe it fits the federal requirements for being considered a high-speed rail, which is approximately greater than 90 miles an hour and greater than 100 miles in length. So double tracking is great. It'll benefit the MetroLink. However, it doesn't really qualify as high-speed rail. It would be nice to have it high-speed rail from Union Station through the valley to San Luis Obispo and maybe up north to San Jose via the valley. However, you would have to deal with the same impacts that the people in Alhambra, East LA, and will be in CD 14 and 9 soon with the heightened, the real high-speed rail as it comes to LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Paul Dyson is our next speaker here in Van Nuys Council Chambers. After that will be Arnold Sacks back downtown. Good morning, Mr. Dyson.
Good morning, Honorable President and council members. I'll be brief. My name is Paul Dyson. I'm the president of the Rail Passengers Association of California. We're a nonprofit, all-volunteer group that advocates mobility for all citizens. I urge you to vote for this motion. Although it's under the aegis of high-speed rail, the high-speed rail funding does also include connections to high-speed rail, and that's how this project qualifies. This project will improve safety, capacity, and punctuality on a critical segment of the second busiest passenger rail corridor in the United States through the city of Los Angeles. By eliminating this bottleneck at Van Nuys and between Van Nuys and Chatsworth, will improve air quality by reducing delays to trains, and will shorten journey time for passengers, which will attract more riders, thus reducing congestion and emissions. Finally, the improvements at Van Nuys present a great opportunity to develop a transit center there with improved connections between bus and rail and an opportunity to build a fine gateway to the mid-valley cities. Please support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dyson. And our last speaker for public comment is Arnold Sacks downtown as well.
Thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. How fortuitous that in today's Daily Breeze, and maybe you might find it in the Daily News, there's an article regarding the 2010 Ig Nobel winners. These are awards given out by Harvard University by the annuals of improbable research magazine. And the reason I bring this up, there are several different categories. One for engineering, one for medicine, physics, peace, public health, chemistry, management, biology, and transportation planning. And the one that was issued for transportation planning was given to five, six gentlemen for their use, for using slime mold to determine the optimal routes for railroad tracks. Here you have high-speed rail, you're looking for railroad tracks, and if there's one thing that any transit organization in this state has, an unlimited fund, an unlimited supply of slime. I would contact these people, put them in touch with the state legislators, and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll close our public comment on this item. Any council members wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 3 called special by Councilmember Rosenthal. There are cards on that, and a substitute motion has been circulated.
All right. Let's hear the cards first. We have one card. Arnold Sacks, if you'd like to come back to the podium downtown. We'd be very excited to hear your comments on this.
More excited than my slime mold comments?
Yeah, arguably.
Thank you. My concerns, this change to Century Boulevard, A, involves, will this involve any impact on the proposal to have a, what is it, a convention center-type arena there? And B, how that plays into the development of the transit-oriented village supposedly plan for the, I don't know, is it the Green Line? Is it the Cruncher Line? What is the need to do this all of a sudden, or why this hasn't been proposed previously? I mean, we know that Lawa bought the parking lot at the western edge, just inside airport property at Century in Sepulveda. So I'm just wondering, what is being vetted to developers down the future? What is being sold out that the public will end up having to pay in this relationship to this change in the use of Century Boulevard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Rosenthal? Yep. Okay. Mr. Rosenthal with jaws. And so with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 5 called special for cards.
All right. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to come forward on Number 5, then Olga Hall, and then Janet Dodson, all downtown. Item number 5.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sreno, also a member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Executive Board. We are against this project in this location and against the extension of this agreement. Rebid it. They've been given extensions before, 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 and now they're back for another one. Why can't they get it right the first time? Well, because they don't care about the community. They propose various monsters. Sometimes they even include the LA CCD for trying to get it past the communities. But the communities have opposed it over and over again. So why don't they just cancel it, the agreement as it is now, and rebid the whole thing? Why? Because the proposed development is not compatible either with the commercial along Figueroa or the single-family, single-story residential's north of the railroad track, the Metro Gold Line railroad tracks. So we're not against transit villages. We're against this transit village and this developer and the agreement. So don't extend it. We would dearly love to have it down in LA 32 Neighborhood Council area, on the Metro Link at Cal State LA. There, it might work. We don't know. But they would have to work with the communities and with the neighborhood councils, which this particular member and partner in the agreement has not done over the last two years, and so please cancel this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Olga Hall is our next speaker, also downtown, then Janet Dodson. Good morning again.
Good morning again. I'm opposed to the Highland Park Transit Project for many reasons. One of the things that I find that is not taken into consideration, the community, is when you bring this item into the agenda with a short notice, is that on purpose to keep the community out of the decision? Now, we have a budget crisis in this city, and one of the things that these areas that you are proposing to have the Highland Transit Project has parking, and that brings revenue to the city. If we are so in such a hole right now economically, why are you going to take that away from the city? Now, how much of a plan do you have with this when we don't have enough water already? We, our water prices are, the reduction of it continues. If you bring more people into these areas, more homes, you have to provide more water, so that means we're going to have to reduce more and pay more. So you have to plan, but have a good plan. Not more people and less, what is it, water, electricity, that we need to have a real city. So please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Dodson is our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Janet Dodson from the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Five extensions over three years for an ERN, which is usually six months. This fifth extension is too many. Councilman Reyes, we in Highland Park want exactly what you want. We want this development to bring housing to Highland Park. We want it to include affordable units. We want it to be green and beautiful and to be a welcoming gateway to our neighborhood. We want to be able to work with you to make this happen. Won't you work with us? McCormick, Baron, Salazar will not negotiate on the size and scale of their proposal, which violates the provisions of our own HPOZ, which is designed to help us preserve the beautiful qualities of historic Highland Park. Several other developers have expressed interest in this project. All of them are eager to work with all of us and with you. None of them insists on 101 units, four stories, and underground parking. Don't extend this ERN. Send this project back to bid, and let us find a developer willing to build what we all want. Let us work together with you to make this an example of what can happen. Let us work together with you to make this an example of what can happen when the city and the people who live in it join. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our public comment. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Intenda. Colleagues, this is one of those efforts in which we are providing affordable in Highland Park, affordable housing. We're using parking lots that the city controls. It's designed so that the first floor allows for amenities where we can offer educational opportunities for our community, working with several different entities in the area. So the complication here has been aligning the Housing Department with the Transportation Department and the developer and trying to come to terms with the different legal processes that include how we work the air rights. It's one of the first times we do this type of project in the city, so we're on rather, relatively new ground. We have been working with the community for many years now. It's been a very controversial issue, a very emotional issue. It's designed to fit the historic fabric of the area. Some folks think it's too dense, other folks think we should have more. We're trying to strike a balance here. I appreciate the perspectives that have been shared in this public comment period. Obviously, they are of the opinion that they would rather see something different. We have been working hard with the various stakeholders. It is a difficult project in terms of how we create this kind of consensus building. As it may, I believe we should move forward. These are deadlines that are set by here, by us here in the city. It's not predicated by any funding source. It's more about trying to get the departments to come to terms so we can get all of the different agreements in line. This will be one of the opportunities where we can showcase how we can activate dead space. We're gonna maintain the parking lot, we're gonna maintain the parking spaces, we're gonna enrichen the area in terms of creating more vitality and hopefully stimulate more pedestrian traffic on Figueroa. And again, I ask for your aye vote in support of this. It is a very difficult process because we are in such a new ground in dealing with how these different departments reach these agreements. So I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Then other council members wishing to be heard will take a vote. Please prepare the roll on this item, and please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please, called special by Ms. Hahn, I believe. Item six, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. This is a reward motion, and these are the facts of the case. On August 1st this year, at approximately 10:05 PM, 45-year-old Ronald Reeves was seated on the front porch of a residence at 9525 Holmes Avenue in Watts. Maria Garcia, who was 10 weeks pregnant, was standing near the front yard with Eliza Herrera and Ramon Williams. A vehicle driving southbound on Holmes Avenue suddenly stopped in front of the residence. A suspect exited the rear passenger side with an assault rifle and shot all four victims without provocation, resulting in the death of Ronald Reeves and the unborn child of Maria Garcia. Ms. Garcia, Ms. Herrera, and Mr. Williams were also seriously injured. To date, police detectives have exhausted all known leads in the case, and the motive for the shooting is still unknown. Detectives hope that a monetary reward of $50,000 will compel the public to provide more information. As with all these cases, I think we all believe that someone saw something, heard something, has heard people talk about it since then, and we hope that this $50,000 will prompt them to come forward so that we can bring justice for this family. Please contact Detective Michael Levant or Mark Hahn, no relation, at 213-485-4341. That's 213-485-4341. Detective Michael Levant or Mark Hahn. Colleagues, I hope you will support me with a yes vote so that we can offer this reward motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. If no other members wish to be heard on this item, we'll take a vote on that. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
We'll send that forth with without objection. Next item called special is...
Mr. President, that does take care of all the items on the regular agenda. Do you wish to recess and go into the special?
Yes, we will call the roll on the special.
Alec, on Cardenas, Hahn, Weiser, Kretz, Kocorion, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zane, Gercetti, 11 members present and equorum.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Items nine and 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas wanted nine special, is that correct? Okay. Anybody wishing to call 10 special? Seeing none, let's take a vote on 10. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items 11 and 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and you have cards on both of those.
Okay, there are no objection. We'll consider those. We have cards on both. And Mr. Kretz, did you want to call one special as well? 11, okay. Let's go back then to item number nine, and Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Natalie. This is, for the city of Los Angeles, seems to be just another day, another important transaction. The city of Los Angeles, the second-largest city in the country, actually has to either refinance money and/or put bonds out there, whether it be the Department of Water and Power, our airport, our ports, the city of Los Angeles, et cetera. And to, for us to participate in bond sales of $150 million, $450 million, $600 million is very commonplace. As a matter of fact, we've actually handled transactions in the city that have exceeded $1 billion on a bond sale. And fortunately, things have gone pretty well for the city for many, many years. But today is a bit of a historic day because what we have before us is senior lead and participants in order to handle these transactions for us and do the good job that we expect of them. It's the first time that I've been on the council for seven years now that we have a fully performing, qualified team that is based with teams that are not from New York. I have nothing against the firms from New York, but categorically, the firms from New York probably take down anywhere between 60, 70, 80 percent of the bond sales in the country, and all the other wonderful qualified firms are dealing with lesser responsibilities. But in this particular case, it was one of the staff recommendations, and the committee that handled this, the Budget Committee, actually took the, actually voted on one of those recommendations that actually resulted in having an historic event where we actually have a participation of up to $600 million in refinancing and new bonds for the city of Los Angeles, where most of the firms are local California-based firms, and overall, they are firms that are mostly medium-sized firms, not the largest firms in the country, which most of the largest firms in the country actually emanate out of New York. Again, many of those firms do a wonderful job, but it's historic for us to be able to see that with the participation over the last five or six years and the shifting of focus of the city of Los Angeles of allowing qualified firms to participate more and more, it's culminated in this opportunity today that you're about to vote on. One of the things that I'd like to dialogue with Natalie about is, apparently, there's a technical amendment that we need to do. The documentation that went through the committee process actually showed that up to $600 million, but some of the documentation that is before us may limit us to $450 million in overall bond sales. So that we need to technically amend the documentation to reflect appropriately that we will go out to sale of up to $600 million. Can you remind us what categorically, how much is refinanced and how much is bond sales that are not refinanced?
Sure, Councilman. Natalie Brill, the CAO's office. We actually are issuing three different types of bonds...
I'm sorry, $650 million?
$650 million.
Yes, okay.
We're actually issuing three different kinds of bonds. We are issuing Build America Bonds, which is part of the federal stimulus program, and those will be approximately $190 million, more or less, depends on the market that day. We're also issuing Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds, which are also part of the stimulus package. What's important about, and that's about $90 million. The reason that that's important is because the federal government guarantees a subsidy. You issue them taxable, and then for the recovery zones, we get 45 percent back in interest from the federal government.
Which is a good deal. And simply...
Good deal. It lowers our interest rates substantially. And for the Build America Bonds, it gives us back 35 percent of our interest cost, which reduces the amount of money the taxpayers have to pay. The only caveat is that we have to issue before December 31st, and our date of issuance will probably be the week of October 11th. The Department of Sanitation has a commercial paper program, which is like a letter, is like a line of credit for your house, and what they do is they use this for their construction programs, and when it reaches $300 million, they need to refund it out so they can continue their construction programs. So out of the $300 million, $150 million will be tax-exempt, and the remaining 150 will be part of this bad program. We've also been looking at refunding bonds, and what that means is, when interest rates drop, we have an opportunity to go back to the market and say, we don't want to pay 5 percent. We want to pay 4 and 1/4 percent, and that's called refunding a bond. You're just paying the amount, you're paying a lower interest rate. So between the time that the report was written and the documents were prepared and the time that we went to committee and to council, the market has shifted, meaning it's, the interest rates have dropped again. So we're requesting authority for another $200 million to be able to refund bonds. Wastewater's a very large program. It pays for all the sewers in the city, which is extremely extensive. It's one of the largest, if not the largest sewer system in the United States, and so we have a lot of bonds outstanding. So being able to refund $200 million will lower the cost to taxpayers. So we're requesting an amendment to allow us to issue not 400 million, but up to 650. And why do I say up to? Because the market could shift again. You know, a report could come out about unemployment, or the stock market could move. And so how much we actually issue depends on that day that we go. And we picked a day that we think that will hopefully get us the best price, which is October 13, 12, 13th, and 14th. We issue over three days.
Okay. Now, when you talk about issuing over three days and the plan or what have you, is that etched in stone? And then a second answer, if you could answer my question, is this what they call categorically a competitive transactions or negotiated transactions?
This is a negotiated transaction, which means that on the day of sale, we actually sit down and negotiate with the underwriters what the actual price of the bonds will be. And that's based on our own analysis, our advice from our financial advisors, as well as what the underwriters themselves tell us. So we actually sit down and negotiate. And so what that means is if, you know, we have an 11-year, a bond that is, that matures, is done in 11 years, and one in 12 years, we can actually move people from the 12th year to the 11th year by either raising or lowering the interest rate. And that helps us to get all our bonds sold.
Which helps us do the best job for the taxpayer and hopefully reduce the amount of interest, et cetera, that over time that they pay. So that flexibility allows us to work the market in our favor.
Correct.
Okay. Which in our favor is, simply put, is if we do things well and things go well, we can actually sit there and say thumbs up, we did a good job, we maximized the amount of savings or minimized the amount of outlay of taxpayer dollars, yet we refinanced all these bonds and/or sold new bonds. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't want to put people to sleep. That'll be enough. I do want to thank Chairman of the Budget Committee, Bernard Parks, for all your great work on this and making sure that, you know, everything went well through the committee process. So I want to thank you so much for all your diligence and all the extra time you put into this. Thank you.
I'd also ask this go forth with?
Sure. We still have Mr. Parks, and don't worry about putting us to sleep, Mr. Cardenas. I've never felt so alive in years. Mr. Parks?
I just want to make sure we got that technical movement covered.
Yes, it is covered. All right, with that, with the technical amendment without objection, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we'll send that forth with without objection. Next item, please.
Item 11 was called special by Councilmember Kretz, and there are cards on that.
All right, in downtown, Dwayne Spindler. Or Wayne, I think it's Wayne. Mr. Spindler?
Yep.
There you are. Good morning, sir.
Oh, good morning. This is an amendment involving two council districts. We have nine and some other ones. And it's two pages of absolute confusion and chaos involving anywhere from $150,000 up to possibly $600,000, or maybe $450,000, depending how everything is going to work. The neighboring city of Bell, California, and Maywood, they did their budgets the same way, exactly like this. No vote, no accountability, no transparency. And someday, people are going to look at this item, because this item is a perfect example of a city broken. It doesn't have anything but taking one set of money away from the homeless shelters and public infrastructure and creating three brand-new accounts to essentially do meridian work that already has been paid for through the taxpayers' dollars, CRA funds, and stimulus funds. The American Recovery Reinvestment Act funds, you can go down, and I drove down recently through Rosemeath Boulevard, through Arcadia and Temple City, and they're doing the entire meridian, all the way from the freeway, from the valley, all the way down to the freeway to San Bernardino. And the funds are provided by the American Recovery Reinvestment people. So you can go and directly apply for these funds to get them directly block granted from the government without having to take this money away from other city accounts. Just do it that way, instead of shifting money around and taking money away from the homeless shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to amend the 8A portion of the council file, number 10-1459, to instead read the CD 5 portion of the funding, $44.83 and 71 cents, is not rescinded, but rather is directed to the San Vicente, Burton Way medians in CD 5. So we would like to, rather than have our money be given back, add some extra money to dealing with a set of median islands that are now overgrown with four-foot-high weeds, abutting the city of Beverly Hills with a perfectly manicured median island that actually meets mid-block. So you have a median that is landscaped so perfectly that it could be a putting green, and then you hit four-foot-high weeds and then for many blocks. So we would like to add that money to more quickly and effectively deal with that median problem.
Is there a second to that?
So just to clarify, I'm sorry, Mr. Kretz, that's second from Mr. Weiser. From which account is that allocated?
Under 8A, it would restore funding to our CD 5 accounts, and we are saying, don't restore that funding, just move it to a different median island.
Got you. Okay, so instead of it coming back into the account, it goes to be spent out?
So we're saying, don't give us money back.
Thank you. Got you. Put it out there on the screen. Absolutely. I just want to make sure for our instructions, we have it clear. Please, if there's no objection, Mr. Weiser, did you want to speak up?
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to add quickly that, you know, this is the end to a long, frustrating process for many of us. This was an issue that managed to slip by all of us during the budget deliberations. At that time, we all thought that the cuts to the city's landscaping program will be felt evenly, but unfortunately, it fell predominantly on CDs 1, 13, and 14. My office worked with these council offices and CDs 10 and 13, as well as the CLA and the Board of Public Works, to find the money needed to ensure that all of our medians will be maintained through the end of the fiscal year. And the Board of Public Works has already approved a one-year contract extension for median maintenance, which officially takes effect today. The CLA's recommendations ensure that the remaining $300,000 hole in funding for the current fiscal year will be filled. They are also committing to us and the board that they will find the $150,000 needed to complete the last three months of this contract, which fall in fiscal year 11, 12. Looking ahead, we are also calling the staff to reach out to DWP and see what they can do to help, as they did recently for Wreckin' Parks, to help the Bureau invest in newer, more efficient sprinkler and irrigation technology, as well as to explore planting native drought-tolerant plants. We are also asking CAO to get in front of this issue for next year and to come up with a plan to how, to fund this work, either through the budget or also more even sharing of the costs involved. Because again, this is a plan that takes us through the end of this fiscal year. Because again, this is a plan that takes us through the end of this fiscal year, but we certainly have to address this for next fiscal year, so that we don't find ourselves in the same predicament where many of our medians are not being taken care of. I'm not sure if you all know this, but with the transferring of the staff from our landscaping division to other portions of the Department of Public Works, we lost all of our irrigation system repair crew. I recently had to do a motion to use twenty-six thousand dollars of my discretionary funds to repair some irrigation systems in my district. We believe that this is a funding that should come directly from the everyday operations of our public works departments, and so hopefully this can be corrected for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weisar. I know Mrs. Corian and I have some concerns about this. We have neighborhood councils that invest in the center medium, and it's not maintained. I know there's been some, sent out the private contract. I've got one in my district along Victory Boulevard, where there's no irrigation, the grass has turned to weeds, which has now turned to dirt, and it really destroys the community. And we have an ordinance in place, where our house goes into foreclosure, we hold those folks responsible, and they can be fined if they don't maintain that property. And here we are, the city of the angels, where we have center mediums that are being neglected, and Street Services doesn't have the crews, and then they send out a private crew that they're paying for, that's cutting dirt. I mean, we really need to look into that entire situation, find out how we fix it. And if the sprinkler system's broken, and it's a hundred and fifteen degrees out here in the valley, it's going to be dead. But we're still contracting with private companies to maintain the center medium. I mean, it makes no sense. So I appreciate you bringing this up. It really needs to be evaluated citywide, because we go to improve those center mediums with vegetation, and then there's no maintenance, and there's no water. So we're either going to eliminate them, or keep them, or cement them over, or do something. But it's really a negative on the community, and there's many areas in the valley where we have these center mediums that have really fallen to a very negative situation, and it does not help the community. Again, neighborhood councils spend money putting it together, and we are not maintaining it. So we need to do something in an expeditious manner to address that. And that's one of the things I'm concerned with, is what's visible to the community when we look at the community concerns, where they're investing in the community, community pride, and Street Services, well, we don't have the personnel, we don't have the sprinkler, we can't fix this, we can't fix that. So the folks throw their hands up and say, does anyone care? We care, we need to make it better. But thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilman Weisar and my colleagues for pushing this forward. You know, Chief Blatton spoke of the broken windows concept. And when we have these medians that are deteriorating, our commercial corridors suffer as well. The notion of desirability is a very real one. When we want to visit these commercial corridors, and we want to shop, and these are the types of challenges we have. But I rise to thank those community members who have spontaneously stepped up, and I've seen them cleaning up these medians, or they're cutting them on their own volition. I'm not sure if they're pulling permits or not, I really, I'm not going to ask. The fact is, they're making a difference, a positive one, and I just want to rise and thank them for that effort. With colleagues, some of the folks might say, why are we spending money on medians when we have these other significant issues? Well, from my point of view, if we're going to be part of the upswing of our economy, and there are indicators that we are moving in a positive direction, our ability to enhance our commercial corridors, to make it more desirable to shop in our city, in our district, that's required for these mediums to look in a much more appealing way, in terms of their landscaping, how they're being trimmed, and hopefully that they're green, because it speaks to the heart and the spirit of that community. So I appreciate this effort. I think this is more of a economic domino effect. This little investment can produce a lot more, if we get more people shopping in our city, and we can more desirable to be there, and enhance our revenue tax base. So it's all connected, and I wanted to make sure that we understood the significance of this action. As my news, as it may sound, the economic ripple effect is very significant. So I thank you for that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Well said, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for those comments. I think it's precisely why we're doing this today. Colleagues, this came from a decision that had been made in the Bureau to just keep on the list those council districts that were on the list at the beginning of the year when we had cutbacks, instead of kind of spreading it evenly, so that all council districts would share in a tougher year, but be able to keep some maintenance there. Instead, were gaps, big holes in the city. This makes that right. And just so folks know where some of the funding is coming from, we had some dollars that were in the council district, and my council district, that were not moving forward with an economic development project under Stimulus, a company we were luring to come here. That helped free up funds from a second pot that then now can be redistributed here. And we were happy to work with all the other council offices, though it is a big problem in our district to make sure that we even that, that I thought was a responsibility I had as council president, but also as a resident of Los Angeles, who does leave the thirteenth council district and enjoys being in other parts of the city as well. But Mr. Reyes is exactly right. When we look at economic development, not only does this put people back to work who will maintain these medians, but in Atwater Village, for instance, people were coming from Glendale, smack right into Atwater Village, with weeds up to our waist, and people were saying, the businesses along Glendale Boulevard there were beginning to feel that pain. If we can't do that basic maintenance, and communities are really stepping up to be partners. They know it's a tough time, they're willing to help supplement some of that. But there are certain things we can't just tell the community, a hundred percent, you maintain this. And that's where city services and taxes should go towards what people expect them to. So thank you, the council offices, to our CLA, for working on this, and we're happy to spread those funds to make sure that this is covered in future years. I agree with Mr. Zine, Mr. Corian, and others, we have to figure out a way that we can have at least a minimal amount of maintenance ongoing. We know that that's something we've had to do in our parks, in other places in tough budget times, but it's simply not acceptable to not do it at all.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar, then Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weisar?
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to remind everyone that what we're doing here today allows for the medians to be maintained till the end of this fiscal year. It does not address the irrigation system problems we have. Like I said, I've been putting in some of my discretionary funds to fix the irrigation systems in our district. But these are items that we hope, that we certainly will address for next fiscal year through the budget process. As the Chair of Public Works, rest assured that this is going to be on top of my agenda, because as other council members have said, my constituents were really concerned that when they come out and try to enjoy the community, or come out to some very important commercial corridors, that we had allowed the medians to go the way they did. It's unacceptable. And with this, we'll get through this year, but we also have to focus on the irrigation problem, and that is something that we will address during the budget cycle. So thank you for your comments, and we'll take this item up during the Public Works Committee. Thanks.
Mr. Reyes.
For the sake of consistency, Councilman Weisar, as Chair of this committee, are we directing for a report back on the status of these systems?
There's a couple of report backs that we're asking for in the report, so that's in there already. We're going to start planning ahead through the report backs in sixty days. We're asking for those report backs in the report.
Could we get a, perhaps a presentation either in your committee or here in front of the council?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can see that the whole city's being treated equally? That we understand the gaps, in terms of how the systems approach is addressing?
Yeah.
Because I think one of the responses I've been getting continuously, and appropriately so, is that because of our lack of personnel, because of cutbacks, our certain priorities, and how we're laying that out, and the systems approach is something I believe we should be aware of. And so how we manage that is something critical to us, because we ended up here in a very awkward way.
Yeah.
Now we're addressing and filling the gap, but now systematically, how are we going to create that even playing field?
And that's the whole goal of this. And I was going to hear the report back in my committee, but I will ask that it come to full council, so that we could all hear those report backs. Because you're correct, I mean, it took all of us by surprise that we weren't aware that the city crews that were cut, and were doing certain districts, were not going to be doing the work. But those that had contracts in those districts that were by contract, they were going to continue.
Exactly.
And that is not the correct way to manage this situation. So in sixty days, we will have them come to my committee, and then I'll have them come report to the full council.
Thank you very much.
If that's okay with Mr. Zine.
Mr. Zine.
That's fine. I just want to add that, where we have contract with crews, not city crews, but it's been contracted out to the private sector, where they go to maintain these mediums, which are already dead because the vegetation has died, we need to evaluate that and say, why are we spending money on a crew that's going out there, and there's nothing but the cut? Because it's not being watered, and what was grass has been de-weeds, now it's dirt, yet they're under contract to maintain this. So we need to evaluate those and say, until we get this in order, maybe we need to take some of those crews and say, maintain what we have available, but those that have already died, until we replant, why are we spending the money? Basically, we're wasting the money on those. So I think we evaluate that aspect also, because I know I got in my district, certain areas where it's not maintained, it hasn't been maintained, it's not being watered, and it seems foolish to see this crew out, this private crew out there, that's not benefiting anyone except draining tax dollars for no purpose.
Mr. Zine, if you could add, if you could add as a friendly amendment on the report backs, that they also report on that specific issue that you raised, and I'll second that.
All right.
And why the?
Mr. Kirk, you have that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Are we looking at drought-tolerant landscaping, is that part of the report back?
Great, okay. Thank you. We did have two speaker cards that came in after we closed public comment, but if there's no objection, we'll hear from them. Rick Nightengale and Candy De Mars.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I believe I like this medium, like they're all, so much of it's dead and not maintained. I realize money is tight, but looking up at Valencia and so forth, where they put the rocks in, that would help, if you concrete the rocks in, from people standing in the medium, it'd be very uncomfortable for the people that are pedaling. I realize, I admire them for trying to make money, but sometimes it's a danger for them to be out there, that it's pretty hard to stand on rocks eight hours a day, and turn around and put stamped concrete. I realize it's hot and so forth, but at least it cuts down on the vegetation, it saves water, and it looks nice. It'll never go bad. But like I say, I live over Sherwood Forest. I live between Nordoff and Partinha, on White Oak. There, we have these great big trees, they haven't been cut. The road is picked up, I can't even drive my Corvette down there, because it's raised six inches out of the ground, and I talked to Councilman Spies, I can repair five roads compared to that road, so I can't see fixing that. So you can't even go down that street, because the trees have lifted up the concrete so bad that you can't drive down the street. So, I mean, even the people that live from that medium are maintaining that for pulling the weeds, that nobody's cut the trees, and God only knows. I lived there for ten years, they've never been cut. So, I mean, this is things that have to be done, and it's proven by other cities to what they've been doing. I realize the city is older, but the new cities are coming up with the newer things that are maintaining more than grass and so forth. Even if you turn around and put artificial turf down, it'll only last for a certain length of time. I realize it's lasting a lot longer, but still, how hot it is here in the San Fernando Valley, it will lift, and then somebody's going to pick it, and it's going to, it'll turn back. But I think a good idea would be looking at the colored rock or something like it, it'll always be there. Costs a little bit more money now, but at least you don't have to, we save water. Thank you.
Thank you. Candy De Mars is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving us this chance to speak. Candy De Mars, Roland Gavero with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. You know, mediums can either be a centerpiece or an eyesore, but I think it's time that neighborhood councils step up and use some of their funds for maintaining some of those mediums. There is a company, and I hope they're okay with me, giving their name, Greenset, who are in North Hollywood, they're in Mr. Corian's district. They have over six acres of landscaping, and they will donate it to any one of the councils. So again, the company is called Greenset, and the gentleman that owns the company is Danny. And again, if you need plants, et cetera, for whatever district it is, they'll give them. My issue with mediums is that they sometimes are given to a group, an organization. We have one on Van Nuys and north of Van Owen. They were paid a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to put in the medium, but never did anything to maintain it. Certain organizations then took on the responsibility of keeping them clean, but again, there's no funds for that. So I think it's time for neighborhood councils to step up and help in taking care of some of those mediums. Adopt a medium, and we can make this city a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are in a special meeting, so we're actually done with public comment. Dr. Wiseman, Mr. Zine said you might have wanted to speak on this, not public comment in general, because we've dispensed with general public comment, we're in a special meeting, which doesn't have a general public comment.
We have moments, and I'll save less than a minute.
Okay, on item number eleven?
That'll do. I think item number eleven is just characteristic of every item, and it relates to the outreach and to the opportunity of the public, and specifically, the neighborhood councils to participate. Before I go into that, thank you so much for returning to Van Nuys and to our part of the world, where the neighborhood councils are here because of the secession movement in this neighborhood, and we greatly appreciate your presence and the ability to come to you closely. You have a lot of paper that I've sent to you, I hope you'll look at and consider some of these items. But opening the opportunities to the public to come before you, speak with you, both in public and in your offices, is a primary responsibility, in my opinion. I believe most of you share that. Thank you for allowing me to present that in front of this group at this time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wiseman. That will close our comments on item eleven. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twelve called special for cards, and there is a substitute motion that has been circulated.
All right, without objection, we'll accept that substitute. Mr. Arnold Sacks, item twelve, downtown.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This reference to Stoner Skate Park, will that include a bong half-pipe ride, or the ten-eighty acid drop maneuver? Of all the, I mean, I understand the publicity in the area of Venice, the iconic, classic review, the Venice, the world, the, I mean, the image of Venice, but Stoner Skate Park? How could that be the winning name for a city facility, public facility in the city? It just does not, just does not get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it was, I don't know if Mr. Rosendahl knows the history, but I think it was named after a Mr. Stoner, which is where it comes from. So after that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Thank you for the good work you've done in that park, Mr. Rosendahl. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. If we can recess or adjourn the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting. Next order of business.
Mr. President, I believe there's a request on item one that was continued to Tuesday to change that to Wednesday, October sixth.
Okay, there's no objection. Colleagues, we'll continue that item number one to the sixth, not the fifth. All right, seeing no objection, we'll continue that till that date. And next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And a desk is clear.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? Ms. Hahn.
Yes, this, today is October first, and we're kicking off Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is why I'm wearing pink today, and I know Officer Zine over there has pink handcuffs. But we, we... Actually, guys, this is kind of serious.
It is serious.
This actually is serious.
I think.
I mean, I know, it's nice to make fun and stuff, but actually, this is really serious. One out of eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. I think we all know somebody that's had breast cancer, who's not won their battle. We know breast cancer survivors, and this is a month where we're bringing awareness to this terrible disease. We're asking women to get checked, get tested, because nowadays, if you're diagnosed with breast cancer, you have a much higher incidence of survival than you did ten years ago. This morning, we were at a press conference with United Checker Cab and Yellow Taxi, Yellow Cab. They've painted some of their taxi cabs pink, and they are pledging to donate a dollar from every ride of any of the taxi cabs towards breast cancer research. So hopefully, we will continue to bring awareness to this, and we will one day be able to have raised enough money and spent enough money on research, that one day, we will get rid of this terrible disease.
Thank you, colleagues. Any, uh, announcements about quick activities? Mr. Zine?
Uh, I want to invite the public to the West Hills Fall Festival tomorrow at Fields Market, Woodlake and Saticoy. Everyone's invited. It's the Fall Festival for West Hills Sunday. Sunday, I thought I said Sunday. Saticoy and Woodlake in the, uh, third council district. Also, I want to acknowledge our colleague, Councilman Cardenas, yesterday, uh, last evening. He was honored with the wonderful group from the San Fernando Valley for his anti-gang activity, helping people and his children presented him the award. It was a very moving experience for Tony and his family, New Directions for Youth. Also acknowledge Dennis McCarthy from the Daily News, but Tony had, uh, devoted a lot of time and interest and I wanted to personally congratulate him on behalf of his colleagues. Wendy Gull, our controller, was there, also introduced the award from the Ann Finn Award. But it's quite a recognition for the work he's done to combat gangs. And it was interesting, there were two individuals who spoke. One was a fourteen-year-old youngster. Uh, he said that fourteen years of age, he was in a gang and on drugs at fourteen years of age. And then another young man who's, uh, had a mom as a single parent and she had a lot of challenges. He was put up in a foster home and the challenges he went through and he finally has his life together. So I want to acknowledge New Directions for Youth and Patty Wolferson and all the wonderful members of that board who've done a great job and they had a wonderful event last night with Tony.
Mr. Zine?
Congratulations for the great job you did there.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you, Dennis. I really appreciate that and it was wonderful to share the evening with you. Dennis was part of the festivities. He made everybody laugh, surprise, surprise. And, uh, he was on the microphone for a little while, helping to raise...
Did he ever speak?
He spoke. No, he didn't wear a boa or anything like that. It was, it was all, it was all on the microphone. And, uh, he helped the organization raise some money last night as well. So thank you very much, Dennis. Eight thousand dollars, uh, in addition to what they had already raised. And, uh, it's a great organization. I, I think it's important for me to point out, the young man who, who spoke last night who said that at the age of fourteen, he was on drugs and, uh, in, in a gang, he is no longer in a gang and he's no longer taking drugs because of this organization that is working with him every single day. And also they had a young lady on video and her and her mother were on the video and one of the counselors explained that when this young girl, uh, started, I think she was ten years old, she was in middle school, and when she came to the program, New Directions for Youth, her report card was straight fails, straight fails. And because of the tutoring programs at New Directions for Youth and the intensity of it is, she went from straight fails to Ds, Cs. Now she has straight As, straight As. Okay? Thank you very much. And, and to, the reason why I wanted to point that out is because New Directions for Youth, I believe, is an organization, like many organizations, that are upholding what we claim to be as a country. And that is a country of second chances. And unfortunately, all too often, our society will look at a young boy and a young girl and say, "Straight fails? No way can anybody or anything help that child get to the point where they are straight As." We have living proof when we support organizations like that and when those organizations do the wonderful things that they can do. So thank you, Dennis, for, for, uh, making that announcement and I thought it would be important for us to put into proper perspective the extent of that wonderful work. Uh, one, one, I had another announcement. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, last night, uh, the governor did have the opportunity to sign and/or veto, uh, legislation that's sponsored by the City of Los Angeles. So I just want to announce that the governor signed SB eleven ninety-two Oropesa, which has to do with airports, rental car facility fees. He also, um, signed, uh, the AB twenty-seven fifty-six, uh, Assemblymember Blumenfeld from the San Fernando Valley, his bill on mobile billboard advertising displays and parking prohibition. Uh, thank you, Mr. Zine, for, uh, being a champion on that locally. And also the governor signed AB sixteen forty-one redevelopment, City of Los Angeles Public Housing Projects. In addition to that, he also signed AB twenty-three forty-seven Führer, which is mortgage defaults, which has to do with secondary public financing. And then, uh, those are the bills that were signed. And I just want to thank, uh, all the city departments, the CLA, the mayor's office, Don Estacio, who runs point for the mayor's office on these matters in Sacramento. And unfortunately, one of the sponsored bills that got vetoed yesterday was AB twenty-five thirty-one Fuentes, our assemblyman here in the San Fernando Valley, which has to do with redevelopment, economic development. That was vetoed by the governor. So by and large, a lot of good news, a little bit of bad news, but I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work and making sure that they educated the legislature and the governor's office. And obviously, the education went well for the bills that got signed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
President, uh, we have, uh, three important meetings in the eighth district coming up. Uh, as we know, uh, September is the infant mortality month and there's going to be a seminar on that issue at Lucy Florence in Limerick Park at eleven-thirty, uh, tomorrow, and that's at thirty-three fifty-one Forty-third Street in Limerick Park. Also, uh, the West, the Empowerment Congress of West Area will have their stakeholders meeting at, uh, Saturday at eleven-thirty at the Crenshaw United Methodist Church on Don Felipe. And then finally, the Figueroa Corridor Streetscape, a twenty million dollar improvement project, is holding two major community meetings to discuss, uh, the landscape, uh, project. One is Saturday, October the second, ten to twelve at St. Vincent's School on Figueroa, and one is Tuesday, October the fifth, uh, at the Seventh and Fig, uh, seven thirty-five South Fig at the Office Building. And that's at six PM to eight PM.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
There is a Los Angeles triathlon this Sunday and it starts at five AM in my district and leaves my district by ten-thirty in the morning. It's going to be a big inconvenience to my folks in Venice and Mar Vista and Del Ray. And I want to alert you to this, this is not a city event, but it's an event that the Fourth Amendment allows them to do. And it's going to be fun for those who participate. They're going to start swimming and then they're going to start running and they end up in the Staples Center. They will be out of our district at Sepulveda and Venice by ten-thirty. In conversations with DOT this morning, I made it very clear that the moment it finishes a crossing, that we open up that crossing on Venice Boulevard. But it will be problematic, I, I say to my constituents, of, in that morning period from about five-thirty to ten-thirty. Pedestrians will be able to cross, but automobiles and bicycles will not be until the, the race is done with that area. My hope is to open them up as quickly as they finish, like I hope on Lincoln Boulevard and Venice to open it up by ten, if in fact they're finished. But we're going to be monitoring it. DOT will be out, LAPD will be out, and the hope is to have as little inconvenience as possible. But they have to be closed due to lawsuits in the past and other issues. So I apologize, though we had nothing to do with it, there will be this inconvenience for that period, uh, but it is because we are so lucky and blessed to have the beach and the oceanfront walk and they'll start swimming and then they'll start running. Uh, but they'll be out of the eleventh district at Sepulveda and Venice roughly about ten-thirty. So make arrangements, uh, on how you're going to be moving around that period, uh, on Sunday morning. Uh, and we will send out another notice to the Mar Vista Neighborhood Council, to the Venice Neighborhood Council and to the Del Ray Neighborhood Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And, uh, this Saturday, tomorrow, we'll have a Little Armenia Chamber of Commerce barbecue on Hollywood Boulevard, fifty, sixty Hollywood Boulevard at the Hollywood Independent Garage. And also Drew Star, the area beset by a lot of, uh, violence a couple of years ago in Glassell Park is having a, a great block party this weekend as well. Uh, that will be over at the Juntos Park in the Drew Star area of Glassell Park tomorrow midday. Um, any other announcements? If not, uh, do we have any adjourning motions today? If we don't have any adjourning, uh, if I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'd ask that we all adjourn in the memory of actor Tony Curtis, who many of you knew passed away this past week, um, who, he died of cardiopulmonary arrest Wednesday night at his home in Henderson, Nevada, at the age of eighty-five. Curtis was born Bernard Schwartz on June third, nineteen twenty-five, in New York City, the oldest son of Jewish Hungarian immigrants. His father was a tailor and his mother raised their three boys. Curtis's, uh, early life was a series of struggles. He said he was constantly taunted for being young, Jewish and handsome. He grew up defending himself on whatever turf his parents lived on at the time, the east, uh, the east eighties in Manhattan, Queens, the Bronx, Manhattan's Lexington Avenue. At seventeen, he enlisted in the Navy, serving in the Pacific dur- during World War Two. After leaving the service, he used the GI Bill for acting classes at the Dramatic Workshop of the New School for Social Research in Manhattan. That led to some work in the Borst Belt, in the Catskills and later to Yiddish Theater in Chicago. He ended up back in New York doing Golden Boy at the Sherry Lane Theater. Then it was on to Hollywood. He changed his first name to Anthony and his last to Curtis. Uh, that was an anglicized version of a Hungarian family named Kurtz. But before long, he was known simply as Tony Curtis. Starting out in nineteen forty-nine as a contract player at Universal, Curtis broke out as a leading Hollywood actor in nineteen fifty-two with Son of Alibaba. He went on to become one of Hollywood's biggest stars in the fifties and sixties. For many film fans, Curtis's most memorable role was in Some Like It Hot, the nineteen fifty-nine film in which he and Jack Lemmon played small-time jazz musicians who witnessed the Saint Valentine's Day massacre in Chicago and pursued by gangsters posed as women to escape with an all-female jazz band bound for Miami. In two thousand, the FI named Some Like It Hot, the best comedy of the twentieth century. I met Curtis, uh, at, uh, the LA Conservancy's Last Remaining Seat Series where this movie